Alan, quick question.
Hello.
Evening.
Hello?
Hey there, how are you?
Todd?
That's right.
This is Alan, okay.
Alan, how are you?
Good, uh, the members on board?
Uh, yeah, Elise is here and I saw Steven a few moments ago.
Steve, you on?
We're here, Al, yes.
Okay. It is 7:02. Welcome to the zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Spencer. This meeting is being held This meeting is being held remotely. The meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 pursuant to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have suspended public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a public publicly accessible physical location. We are meeting remotely and broadcasting live on Spencer Cable Access. Okay. Members sitting, uh, myself, Alan Colet, the chair, Elise Jacks, and Steven Tyler.
It's John.
I'm sorry, Elise, Elise John. This meeting. The board will ask questions. Um, and at a later time, we'll open it up to the public for debate. We are seeking info, um, from an earlier meeting which was continued. And I believe the board did receive some correspondence from the sewer commissioners. I don't know, Todd, you have a copy of that, if you could put it up?
I, hang on one moment.
Well, while we're waiting, uh, this is a continued comprehensive forty B permit. Applicant owner Women's Institute Realty Location Seventeen Lake Street, Spencer's Accessor Map U one five dash O one. The applicant is requesting a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter Forty B, twenty twenty-three and seven sixty CMR fifty-six. The applicant is looking to construct a new three-story building and will consist of a total of thirty-three rental units for seniors aged sixty-two years or older, including a total of twenty-nine, twenty-nine, thirty-two one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom units. The property is located within the Village Residential Zoning District. A new three-story building.
I don't believe I was CC'd on any communication from the sewer commission. If someone can even let me, I can put it right up.
Um, does Steve or Elise have a copy in front of you?
Oh, hang on, I do have. Let's see, that septic plan, I've got that. I do not have any communication from the sewer commission.
I have a copy, Al.
Very good.
Through the, through the chair, uh, this is Damian Bertham. Uh, Mr. Colet, are you referring to the letter that I had shared with, uh, Monica from the sewer commissioners or is there something else? Cause I could certainly send a copy of the letter.
I believe that's it.
Okay, uh, so Mr. Planner, if you'd like, I could certainly send a copy of the, the letter that you're looking for to you if you, uh, if you'd like, if you'd like to give me your.
Okay, I, I, that, that won't be necessary, I don't immediately have it in front of me, but if, if Steven or Elise has it in front of them, if they could please read it.
I, I'm looking for it, hold on.
I have it, if you want me to go ahead and read it, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, go ahead, Steve.
So I am looking at a letter dated October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, from the sewer commission. The subject to Damian Bertham. The RE subject line is Lake Street Senior Housing. The letter reads as follows. Dear Sir slash Madam, the Spencer Sewer Department has an NPDES National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit from Mass EPA slash DEP which specifically restricts us from receiving flows greater than eighty percent of the design flow of the facility on a twelve-month rolling average. Our design flow is one point zero eight million gallons per day, of which the eighty percent threshold would equal eight hundred and sixty-four thousand gallons per day, which we currently exceed. Please be advised that during the Board of Sewer Commissioners September twenty-second meeting, the board imposed a moratorium for all residential commercial and industrial connections over four hundred and forty gallons per day of design flow. This was done in an attempt to help control inflow and infiltration, also known as INI, while we continue our sewer system evaluation study. We have been involved in the sewer system evaluation study over the last couple of years and have a lot of work left to do in order to identify areas of concern to help mitigate the INI. Same as inflow and infiltration. At this time, the board would be unable to allow the connection of the proposed senior housing project at the Lake Street School site. Normally, we would allow a developer to do a four-to-one ratio of INI removal, but at this moment, we have not identified a source that would quantify the design flow to removal ratio. We will continue to work towards identification and removal of INI sources within our collection system so that in the future, we would be able to support a project of this magnitude. Signed by all three sewer commissioners, Francis X White, Larry H Duefall, and Michael I Merk Kentay, Board of Sewer Commissioners. Never said Michael's last name before.
Okay, uh, did, Steve, did that basically answer the questions you had regarding the, uh, uh, the sewer hookup?
Uh, I'm, I'm contemplating your question now, um. Since the letter doesn't match what the super superintendent told me, even after receiving this letter, I, I can't answer that in the affirmative. I am confused as to how we are at this point, but it's, I will, I'll put it at this to the applicant, cause this will answer the question I have based on conversation with the superintendent, if I may. And my question is this, if some INI could be identified that could make this four-to-one ratio happen, is this something that this project would be interested in pursuing?
I, I, I think that it would, uh, I mean, certainly we'd, we'd need to look at, um, the overall cost of that, but, uh, that was the original plan. Uh, and that the, you know, the issue that we, we had previously, uh, is what's identified in this letter. Uh, what prompted this letter, I will tell you, was participating in a meeting, uh, with the sewer commissioners, you know, during which time, uh, the hope was that they were going to be able to identify sufficient INI for us to, uh, accomplish that and, uh, and connect. Uh, so certainly, uh, we would evaluate it. Uh, the installation of the septic system on the, on the site, uh, was not, uh, the intended course of, uh, course of action here. Uh, but it's what we were left with after receiving this communication. And I haven't received any communications to the contrary since this, I, I would say as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Steve, do you have any, uh, further comment on that before we go on to something else?
Sure, thank you for asking. So my, my thought in that regard, uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Damian is, is that certainly, I don't think getting an answer to that question is something that should hold up the ZBA process. Um, what, when, should we get to the point to where we're making the determination and, and a ruling with or without conditions? Um, maybe we consider a possible condition of Elise asking the, um, applicant to, to revisit this matter with the sewer, commissioners to see if, to just basically take another shot to see if there might be an opportunity for a connection to the sewer. Um, before we, before they close the door and move forward with the, um, septic system. So I, I think if we can discuss it in that way, that would be, um, what I would be looking for.
And through the chair, I, I think that that would be a, a reasonable condition. Uh, I, I would, I would simply, uh, ask that, uh, if we do get to that point and we are, uh, getting into con- conditions associated with a decision, then maybe the condition would be that we make, uh, reasonable attempts, uh, with the sewer commission to identify INI that would allow for, uh, for a connection. I, I, I think a condition that, that required us to, uh, to, to, to connect to sewer would be problematic because if, if we're unable to identify the INI, uh, then I, I don't think that that would, uh, you know, that, that would certainly hold up the whole project at that point. But certainly, the applicant would be open to, uh, to continuing to evaluate possibility with the commission.
Okay. Steven, you had some questions about looking at an elevation regarding the back of the building, I believe?
I, I, I did, I, I kind of, is, how are we gonna proceed with this? Do we want them to just re-present that, does the applicant have other plans? Do you want me to just kind of revisit my questions or? How, I do have that question, yeah.
Uh, can somebody address that?
Uh, so I, I believe that Jason, this is Damian Bertham again, I believe that Jason DuBois is on the line. Uh, but, uh, I just want to make sure that the revised plans that, that Mr. DuBois had provided are before the board, because I believe at the last meeting, uh, Mr. Tyler was requesting a cross-section uh, of the, the slope, uh, in front of the building. That was, uh, included on a plan that Mr. DuBois had drawn. It, it's, uh, PDF number seven, uh, it shows cross-section AA as a, as a, uh, uh, sort of blowout or a, a breakout on the side of that plan. Uh, so I, I just want to make sure that the board does in fact have those plans there.
I have a hard copy, uh, printed out, this is Steven Tyler.
Okay.
I also have it, this is Elise Jones.
Okay, uh.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let Jay discuss that one.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, this is Jason DuBois calling. Um, so I tried to address, uh, you know, Mr. Tyler's comment on that plan sheet. Um, as Damian said, there is a, a cross-section that goes from the curb line in the front of the building, right through the, the middle of the building, through the back of the parking lot. Um, and it does show the existing grade, uh, the proposed grade, it shows the existing building and also the proposed building. Um, I also was able to lengthen out that slope from what was originally proposed, which was a three-to-one. Um, you know, and, and the slope does vary still from like a three-to-one to maybe a five or a six-to-one. Uh, but it does carry out all the way to the existing sidewalk to kind of flatten out that, that slope and not be such a, you know, a flat area and then such a steep slope. Um, so I don't know if you have the chance to look at that and kind of see that on what I'm talking about, or if there's any, uh, you know, any follow-up questions on that.
Members?
I'm, I've, I have seen that and I think that that's an improvement, I love, I think both, um, I, I think it's an improvement in both the slope itself and the geometry, so I think the, the, that it doesn't look so much like a wall. Earth and wall, burr, or an earth and berm, it looks, um, yes, I see that and it's certainly an improvement. Uh, and I'm gonna say thank you for looking at that adjustment and incorporating.
I think that the irony, uh, this is Damian Bertham again, uh, the irony here is that the, the, the reason that the building, I think, is as far forward as it is, uh, we, we had a chance to discuss this after the last meeting, uh, is because of the need for the septic system, uh, so we, we keep coming back to that unfortunately. Uh, if, if we were not, if we're not necessary for us to support in that system and create the reserve area, it's possible we can push the building further back as well, uh, in order to alleviate that slope a little more. But because of the system, that's, that's really why the building is cited where it is.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions on that particular item, um, I'd just like to ask on the, on the R O, R dash O one shows the, um, a couple of street lamps outside. Um, is that, is that what you people had in mind for installing?
Not sure if any of the architects are on the line. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this, this is Jay again, I was gonna say, I, I did add the, the street poles, uh, in the back parking lot with the illumination levels on the plan, um, so they could see those, um, but I guess, I agree, it's kind of up to the architect, I guess, on what they had in mind for actual light fixtures. I know that they'd be dark sky compliant and all that, but I don't, I don't have the exact details on the lighting.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is just a penciled-in drawing picture of a, of lighting, correct?
Um, again, I'm not exactly sure, are you, are you looking at, at the DC engineering plan or?
No, I'm looking at the, the last page of, uh, Lake Street Senior Housing.
Yeah, I'll get to that, uh. Are you, so the, are you referring, Mr. Colet, to the lighting and utility plan?
Uh, it's the schematic rendering O one. It's the show in the front of the building.
Okay.
There's a car on the front.
The front elevation, okay.
Yes.
Uh, yes, I, I mean, I believe that that is what they are, uh, planning on it, unfortunately, it doesn't sound like the architects are, are on the call. I did receive a text message earlier that someone was having trouble, uh, getting into the meeting and, and maybe that's who that was from.
Uh, does it, yeah, can, can anyone hear me? This is Greg's Rosie, sorry, uh, Architect Studio One. Um, the rendering, I mean, your underings are rendering, you know, it's an artistic, just an artistic drawing, I would refer basically to the plan, but I can tell you that, uh, in addition to dark sky compliant lighting, we're all gonna have, uh, uh, zero cutoff so that there won't be any light shedding on to adjacent properties, um, there. So we're gonna provide enough lighting, uh, for the safety of the residents, um, but, uh, well, it's not gonna be, uh, you know, family park, you know what I mean? It's gonna be very, just what it needs to be.
Okay, and I, and I assume that it's gonna be right out in front of the building, correct? Following the line of the, uh, the drive?
Yeah, the, uh, parking area and usually the drives are lit.
Okay, I'm not so much concerned about the rear of the building as I am in the front. Okay, I, I just wanted to bring up, uh, this point that seeing the, that the town is, is splitting this parcel, making it two parcels. Um, there, there is a drive. There is a driveway, um, on the backside. That comes off of Highland Street. And I don't see that being shown, um. Uh, I guess this would probably be addressed more to the select board, but if, uh, if somebody's gonna make a copy of the new, the new parcel, they should at least keep, keep the, uh, grandfathered, uh, curb cut going in from Island Street and that services the Little League field. Um, that I believe, I know it was used fifteen years ago, um. I believe there's a gate in front of it, but it should show on the plan when this, when this gets recorded. Uh, it's a grandfathered situation, so you don't, you wouldn't want to lose that. Any further questions from the board? Elise?
No, I have no question.
No, I have no questions.
Steven?
I do, Mr. Chairman. This is Steve. So with regard to what you were just speaking about, Mr. Chairman, when we talked about this last week, I thought we talked about the circulation up there at Lake Street School and this site currently is traffic enters the site from Lake Street and it exits the site on the Highland. The town is still going to own the curb cut on Highland. But that whole circulation is designed in the parking that's there for the park is designed for it to be one-way out. And so what I thought we talked about, and I thought everyone was okay with, was that this project would somehow make an allowance for... I don't know whether it's called a license or right-of-way or basically for the public to be able to turn off of Lake Street and go through that, just that lower parking lot, that's not the parking lot for the facility, but their backup parking lot, and be able to take the left and continue onto Highland Street as an exit maneuver and also to be able to access that angular parallel parking that's designed to go in the direction towards Highland. Not like that can't be overcome. You can reverse the angle and just, you know, lose some space on either end. But then, is it one-way going the other way out to Lake Street School? I don't know, once you put the parking in there, that there's enough width for two ways. So I thought that's the way we talked about it, and everyone was okay with just allowing traffic to go through that lower parking lot and do the circulation that it does today.
Yeah, I'm in full agreement with what you just said. What I'm referring to is if the town decides to develop the backside of that property that they're keeping.
Yeah.
On Highland Street, way in the rear, there's a curb cut, and that's access to the Little League field. That should be on the plan that gets recorded. It doesn't have anything to do with what's going on tonight. I just want to bring it up, so it will get addressed. And if there's some members of the select board, they can probably address it later when we open it up. But no, I'm in full agreement with the one-way. Naturally, the parking area, diagonal parking area that faces to the south would actually be parking for the... I guess it's going to be a park from here on. And that area could be reserved for that facility only. I would imagine that the parking, the diagonal parking that comes off of Lake Street would almost have to be for overflow. I mean, as it is, what they're asking for doesn't even meet the current code. They want to go out 99 years, which is kind of crazy. But that area there could be used as the overflow area if the area in the back fills up. I think we're... I believe we're all in agreement with that. So yes, it would be a one-way coming in from Lake Street and going around. And then I would suspect that members coming down from the rear of the building would have to take a left, I'm sorry, take a right and go out that way. That really doesn't change anything as far as the way it's set up previously.
So then, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I'll clarify then with regard to that. I misunderstood what you're talking about Highland, but when you get back around on the backside of Highland and where you can access from behind, you know, behind the ballfield and all that, that's actually going to still be the town. The town will still own that. And actually now, yeah.
Okay, so we're not creating two parcels. Just the lease is creating two parcels. Is that correct?
Yes, as I understand it, just the lease is creating two parcels. I'd let our attorney or their attorney clarify that from a...
That is my understanding. The lease area would be part of a second parcel. The entirety of the fee in the property though would remain owned by the Town of Spencer. In terms of the question that was previously posed about traffic flow from Lake Street sort of around the park through Highland Street, I do think that the board ought to be aware that in the notice of... I'm sorry, in the option to lease, which the town has executed with my client, section four of that requires the town to... I'm sorry, requires the developer to grant a mutually satisfactory easement. I think in this case, since we're going to be talking about a lease instead of a transfer of the fee, it wouldn't necessarily be an easement, but more likely a license or a right reserved in the lease itself to continue to pass through that area. But as far as the property area, the property that Mr. Colette is describing up on Highland Street, I expect that the town's going to continue to own the fee on that. And I'm not even sure that a plan of that property would be drawn as part of this, because it's not necessarily relevant to the area that we are proposing to develop.
It... No, I agree, but if the town decides to develop it at a later date, that was my big question. Then the boundaries do come into play, even though the town still retains ownership.
I agree with that.
If... This is Elise. If you go in and you further read the option to lease agreement, it says the town is going to subdivide the 23.4 acre parcel into two parcels, one of which will be leased premises and one which will not. This subdivision shall be completed by the date of the execution of the lease or as soon as the particulars thereafter. And then it goes on to discuss the costs. And then in the next one, it talks about walkways, driveways, et cetera. So I think they covered pretty much all of it under the option to lease. In my opinion.
So what you just read...
On behalf of the applicant, I agree with that.
So the town is creating two parcels, even though they're retaining ownership to one and giving a lease, correct?
That's what it sounds like under the option to lease.
Okay, well, that makes it even more important to maintain that curb cut. And that should be shown on the plan when it does get recorded. It's grandfathered, so there's no point in, you know, losing the grandfathering if this is recorded without it. I'm just saying, that's all.
The lease area does not touch Highland Avenue in any way?
I'm sorry, Steve?
The lease area does not touch Highland Avenue anyplace.
I realize...
Highland Street, okay, all right.
I'm just referring to the curb cut into the back property, that's all. There's one already there, so, you know, whether later on, if the town wants to develop the back part of the lot, they can either use that or make a new one, but that one is grandfathered. And I just think it should be shown on the property. And what Elise just repeated, it sounds like that's the case to me.
So through the chair, Mr. Colette, I don't think that there'd be any opposition to that from the applicant. And frankly, I don't think that the applicant has any legal interest in that area of the property. To the extent that a lease plan is drawn that shows the area that we're leasing, you know, that could be drawn just as that parcel without affecting the remaining land area of the town. Having said that, if the Town of Spencer would like to have that second parcel included on there, as... I don't want to refer to you by her first name, it's Mrs. Johns. She just pointed out, the option specifically identifies how the costs of breaking up the survey and so on and so forth would be borne. So certainly something that we could address when it comes time to execute the lease itself as opposed to just the option, and I'm sure that we could work that out with the select board.
Yeah, it doesn't... It really doesn't affect you people. It's more or less on the town's side of things. Okay, so moving on. Was there any other questions that the board had regarding the last meeting going forward? I'm not hearing any. Okay, at this time, we'll open it up to the public. Please state your name and where you live. Anybody out there?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Gary Woodbury, 219 Cheltenham Road, Spencer, Mass. If you look at their plan, the rear parking lot, there should be, it's either an 18-foot or a 20-foot right-of-way access to town to access through their property to get into the other section of the property that was part of the... That we worked out, that we'd have access off of their site to get into the property that runs on Highland Street. The opening you're talking about on Highland Street is still there. It's right after my grandmother's, where my grandmother's house was. That is... We own all that land down at the water tank anyways, I think, at that point. So there should be plenty of frontage there if we ever needed to cut a road in there. It's not like we're locked into a 25-foot right-of-way, I believe. Steve might be able to answer that. But in the agreement, they are giving us access through their back parking lot. It should show on a plan somewhere. I don't know where it is, but...
It does. The only thing... It's just referred to as an 18-foot wide fire access.
Part of the requirement was that we had access coming off of that site, whether it be fire or whether it be, you know, at some point, our fire station, police station is over 30 years old, probably on the worst section of town, the furthest end of town. So that's why we want to retain as much property as we can there, just in case, so... Just a little insight, so I don't know if that helps you, but that's why we requested access through there.
Yeah, no, I see that. No, I just... It's there, so my whole point is if you're going to split the lots up, it should be recorded to show that there is a curb cut down there going forward.
And it's a lease for a certain parcel of land. We're not selling the land, so, you know. I won't see it, but maybe someday, God willing, my grandkids will be able to see future use of that land.
Yeah, well, I'm really referring to the rear lot. If they decide to develop it, that's when it becomes important. That's my only point.
No, you're right. No, you're right.
Okay, any other questions? From the public, any questions? I guess there's none. Okay, if there's no further questions from the board...
I have no further questions.
Steve?
No further questions, thank you.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
This is Steven Tyler. I make a motion to close the hearing.
I second that motion.
And the motion's carried. The chair awaits a motion on the petition.
Would you like to do a roll call vote on that, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, roll call. Elise?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. The chair awaits a motion on the petition.
I need some time to gather some thoughts, Mr. Chairman.
Take your time, take your time.
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve. So just to try to help make this go smoothly with regard to motions and conditions. We'd like to start with the motion and the conditions that I have right now, and then whatever we bring up for discussion or potentially add or tweak any. Do you think that's what we're looking for right now?
That'll work.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the permit with the following conditions. The first condition is make reasonable attempts with the sewer commission to identify sufficient inflow and infiltration, parentheses, I and I, close parentheses, for the project to be able to mitigate sufficiently to allow the project to connect to Spencer Public Sewer. That would be the first condition. The second condition is that the applicant shall grant the town and the public the legal right to access and drive through the existing parking areas using the Lake Street curb cut. I'm certainly open to suggestions if there's some better wording for that. If that's, at least gets the idea across. The third condition is updating the lease plan to clarify the fire access through the back. I'm sorry, it took me so long to understand what you were referring to. And that's my motion at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, wait for a second.
I second.
Okay, I want to add one condition to this permit. That the petitioner allow for 42 spaces behind the building. Seeing that this is going out 90 years, what they asked for does not even meet the existing zoning. I can't imagine going that far out with what you're asking for. And the drive coming in off of Lake Street, those horizontal spaces can also be used as an overflow for parking if needed in the future. That might be subject to something the town might want to enter into an agreement on a short-term basis. But I'm looking for an amendment to your motion, Steve, for 42 vehicles. to your motion, Steve, for 42 vehicles behind the building. So you accept my amendment? Steven?
Uh, yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Elise?
I'll second that.
Okay, and I'll make it unanimous. Roll call, Steven?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Okay, so the, uh, the petition is passed. There's a 20-day appeal period. And the chair wait for a motion to adjourn this hearing.
A motion to adjourn the hearing for this project?
Yes.
Don't move it.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's carried. Okay, so now-
On behalf of the applicant, I'd just like to say thank you for, uh, for your efforts in this project and, uh, uh, we look forward to building this out, so thank you very much. Uh, I, I also just want to offer, uh, I, I'm not sure who's going to be drafting the, uh, decision on behalf of the town, uh, but I'd be happy to offer to assist with that if, uh, the town has not previously been involved in drafting a, a 40B decision. So, uh, Mr. Miller or, or, or Mr. Colette, if you'd like my assistance, uh, in, in doing that, I'd be happy to assist.
Uh, I believe, I believe we can, we can draw it up. Um, what I would be looking from, from you is if you could, um, if you could just locate the extra spaces in the back of the building and forward that to the town planner.
Okay, we can do that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Would you like to take a roll call vote on the last vote?
Roll call. Steven?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Okay, moving on. We have approval of minutes from 11221 and 121 2021. I take it everybody's read the minutes?
Yes.
Any changes? Comments?
I didn't see anything that needed to be changed.
Okay, we'll, we'll take the, uh, 11221 minutes first. Steven, are you good with those?
It doesn't show that we open and close. I'm trying, is my dates off? This is the night that we opened, we at least opened and closed the Lake Street School hearing. We had the problems with the meeting and we postponed the meeting, but, um, Mr. Berking brought to our attention the need to at least open and close the meeting, so we did. Um, and so I don't see that on these minutes. It just looks like we just closed the meeting without discussing Lake Street School.
Well, we did. I mean, if, if it's not in the minutes, uh, I think it, there's a notation that needs to be there that says that we, we did.
So we can table those till another time, and if you refer back to my previous emails, I describe all of that.
Okay.
I, I'm not, Todd was on them, at least, um, Monica and you were on them, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I, now that you say that, I do remember reading that, Steve.
Okay, so we'll table the minutes of 11221 to a future date. In the minutes of 121.
I did not have any comments on those.
Elise?
Neither do I.
Okay, so the chair await a motion on the minutes of 121 2021.
Uh, this is Steve Tyler, go ahead.
This is Elise Johns. I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2021, as written.
And this is Stephen Tyler, I second that motion.
Okay, the motion's carried. Um, roll call, Steven?
Yes.
Elise?
Yes.
Chair says yes. So, Todd, do you have any, anything new in, in your report?
Uh, I have a couple of items, if, uh, if you'll indulge me for a moment. I just, uh, began working, I was just assigned, uh, my partner, uh, for working on the housing production plan from CMRPC uh, in light of the Housing Choice and Affordability Act that was signed into law about a week and a half ago. Uh, that there, um, with the conditional approval granted today puts us eerily close to a 7% subsidized housing inventory marker, uh, closer ever still to the 10% requirement, uh, under chapter 40B. Uh, once we reach that chapter, for that 10% chapter 40B requirement, we will no longer be, uh, vulnerable or subject to any possible, uh, unfriendly 40B, unfriendly comprehensive permits under 40B. In addition to that, I've been working with CMRPC for, um, for, uh, contracting with folks for electronic permitting systems, which is, uh, an exciting development that make, uh, all of our lives more efficient and easier. On top of that, uh, there hasn't been all that much movement in the past couple of weeks. But, uh, I'll, I'll be happy to share anything else as it develops and as it moves.
Okay, so I take it you, that included the new business?
Yes, the, uh, the new business that's coming in, uh, that, are you referring to the Rapsgalian project?
Uh, whatever's new, um.
Uh, yes, uh, coming down the pipeline is a, um, is a request from, uh, Rapsgalian Brewery that's going through the Board of Select process as well, kind of concurrently. Their approval is contingent upon approval here at the ZBA. Uh, I'll be sure to fill you guys in, uh, as things come down the pike.
Okay, uh, is there anything else?
Uh, no, sir, that's all at the moment.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? Steven?
None at this time, thank you.
Elise?
None at this time.
Okay, the, uh, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, Steve Tyler.
Elise Johns, I second that.
Okay, motion's carried. Thank you and good night.